We're good.
Welcome to the City of Green River's regular city council meeting held Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at Green River City Hall. First order of business will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as directed by Kathy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a matter of note, the council is, everyone in the council is in attendance with the exception of Kathy Ryan, who asked to be excused to take care of a family matter. She is excused. We'll begin with agenda item number one, an update from the Dominion Energy on Natural Gas project.
Okay, we gave a short, I guess, preview before we started construction and told, you know, kind of what we planned on doing, how many customers we planned on signing up and stuff. But short, six or seven months later, we had installed a total of about, I was just totaling it up, seventy-five thousand feet. So you can do the math, fifty-two eighty, how many miles that is. That all, that is all inside the city. That's all the distribution system. In addition, we talked about this our last, the last time we met you guys, but we ran, we bought a sixty-inch pipeline that comes out by Moab, converted that to a six-inch. I pressure that we ran another seventeen miles, kind of as the crow flies, to get gas to the city. And that's where the supply is coming from. To date, we have signed up, this is maybe a couple days old, but about three hundred and seventeen service lines, so that's going to be contracts for that many service lines in the city of Green River. We've installed two hundred and forty-ish, probably a couple more than that of those. And got about four meter sets. So the meter sets we go pick up, you know, with some speed and regularity. And that's really why we wanted to come tonight. I'm from Salt Lake. I don't know a ton about what's going on with the project here, other than trying to keep track of it. This is your local team. Terry and Callie have done a lot of the sign-ups here. Cory's our new Eastern Region Manager, so Price, Fernal, Moab, Green River, now that we have gas here. And then Robbie's Operation Support out of Moab. And most of the, you know, if we have, haven't forbid, a leak call or some kind of emergency call, it'll either come from Robbie or maybe out of Price, depending where we have technicians. But that's how we'll handle it for now. I'm sure we'll have an employee or two here at some point if we don't get it. So we just want to take a minute and talk about the signup process. So now if somebody has got their service line in, you know, there's a riser at their house and they're ready for gas, what are the next steps? One thing we did is we created a separate phone queue for the customers that are calling for that. So we have a very trained staff in Salt Lake. All our calls are local, we don't send any off shore of our call center. So I think we're going to talk a little bit, I don't know, let's go first, about how we would like to interact, to get an inspection, appliances converted, and a meter set, all in the same day so we don't have laps of service.
That's nice.
So once the service line is installed, they just need to call our customer care department and they set up a specific number for Green River residents to do that. And we provided that information to the city office too, so they can all relay that message. We're also, Terry and I, reaching out to our sign-ups, the ones that we've worked with, to let them know what that process would be and that phone number. They'll need to get an inspection from Emory County Buildings Department. There's a process and they've also submitted that information to your office and they've given us a copy of it. Sunrise Engineering will be doing the actual inspection.
And that's just Tuesdays a week?
Yes, Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So once they've got that inspection done, we get, we will get a list of who they're going to inspect on that day and we'll have a tech that is with them, following them around. We'll be ready, we know what equipment they'll need, the meter size and all that stuff, so that the tech will be ready to set that meter and turn it on.
Any questions? I mean, it sounds simpler. Just call, give us some information. I'm sure the logistics on your end might be a little bit more complicated, but yeah, it's pretty simple, I guess.
We do, I want to know a couple of things from, if you guys have heard, if we've left anything undone or if you did, we want to hear about that and we'll get that fixed. Have we?
We got some settling going on.
So we'll fix whatever path it will fix.
We're going to talk about that through the day if we don't manage it now.
And I've talked to a couple of the contractors, the HVAC contractors that will be upfitting appliances. And the ones I've talked to have made it very clear to them that they are not to come try and sell somebody a twenty thousand dollar HVAC system if they really need it. We just want to have their appliances made and to gas-ready. And if any of them have a question, Robbie or any of his team can come and kind of give their opinion on whether or not, I mean, we're not probably as highly trained as they are, but we do know it'll be us when we see it too. So if somebody's being told, hey, you're just going to have to replace every appliance in your house and you can cut me a check for that, we want to get involved until that happens.
No meter till inspection?
Correct, yeah, we have to have city clearance and.
You have to have that inspection and you have to have your gas account set up. And that, also on that dedicated phone number is bilingual.
So when you call us, say your account, they'll, they'll issue the meter set, the order for it, and it'll go into a will-call status and it'll just sit there and wait until these guys are on side with the city inspector or the HVAC contractor. Then with, as soon as it's, you know, it's passed pressure test and everything, we'll call, they'll release the order, set the meter, line appliances, right? And then if they need to be lit, we'll be on our way to that.
Typically, like the one today I did, I let the contractor do it because he was still there.
It's fine, yeah, whoever wants to do it.
And that's why it's kind of good if we are there when they are there.
Okay.
And all that, so.
Does it have to be a licensed contractor to, I don't know how to, right? Do the, do the residents know that?
We have the packet that we give them from the county and it gets the whole.
So Sunrise shouldn't inspect unless there's like a licensed.
So does that mean you can't do your own orifices and that type of stuff?
Well, you, you know, what we obviously say as a knowledgeable individual, we have turn-ons and stuff. So, you know, I guess it depends on if the inspector's there with him or not. Like the inspector might not let, like, I don't know, I, we'll have to see what those situations turn out as. If somebody has the know-how and they're, you know, they're doing it correctly, I guess, it'll be up to the inspector if we have that sort of.
So there's a lot of old homes here and don't have existing plumbing for that kind of thing. Is it okay to run the piping for that house on the outside of the home?
Yeah, steel pipe, yeah, we want plastic or the corrugated outside. I don't think you want to see this here outside, do you?
You can put CS.
There's some that's outside rated, yeah.
It's outside rated.
That's the corrugated stuff, but it's metal with a plastic coating, yeah. Black pipe is what people usually go, just, just metal pipe.
Just undercoat, keep it three and a half inches off the ground. So it doesn't corrode later on.
Three-quarter inch, like.
So that would depend on the length of your run and also the amount of BTUs that you're going to use in your home.
Okay.
We can help with that.
When I say "we."
Yeah.
Larry wants to live in driveway and so he probably gets a great experience.
The one thing I was going to add to that is in that packet, the question of can someone do it themselves, in that packet it does have the homeowner, builder certificate where you are notarizing that, hey, I am the homeowner, I'm doing this, I'm not a licensed contractor, but as homeowner, I'm signing on it.
Passed inspection.
Yeah, but it's, it's not a matter of we have to call and pay that contractor. We can do it ourselves if we feel like we know how. Basically, yeah, basically just signing it, just like when you're building your own home, you can do it, but you have to have this form signed saying, I'm taking responsibility if a house falls over.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'd like to review this site because I haven't seen the packet.
Yeah, they put that in there, the contractor.
So you can enroll or make your account way far ahead?
Yes, we would prefer that.
We're trying to encourage that now.
Yeah, call.
As long as you have a service line in, as long as you have a service line in, you can actually call and create that account.
And we won't charge anything until we activate the meter. And that's when the, the fee to read is a seven-dollar a month service charge to read and maintain the meter. So, and then, yeah, the volume, sorry.
So like the my house, I have propane currently, so it's plugged for everything. But where you said the meter is just around the corner from the house, where the propane deposit, can I run it around that corner and in or?
I'll bet you we will.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're doing short runs, right, and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, wasn't really part of the house bill, but we've been trying to accommodate that.
Okay, so, I mean, it's honestly like maybe foot and a half.
Oh, oh, yeah, we'll just tighten it, yeah. I thought it was like fifteen.
One question that I had at the office is when I built my house six years ago, I have, obviously knew enough appliances that have an orifice for this and that, and I've set this one aside. Have you run into like, oh no, those aren't good anymore, you need to now switch and do something else?
I hope not, yeah, we should, that's the kind of stuff I want to hear about.
Yeah.
If we have an HVAC contractor trying to take somebody for a ride, you want to know about it.
So we had one of those, Robbie went and checked the guy's appliances for him, he is good to go.
Yeah.
It was not, it was not one of our contractors on our list.
The conversion kit on a on-demand water heater is three hundred and something dollars.
Sure.
Everything else is, he doesn't have to pay nothing for it.
And the, the timing on getting a meter set, so they have, you know, a customer has two years from the later of two dates, either when they signed up for their service line. So that could have been after it was gassed or the system was gassed. So the system was gassed like October, middle of October, I think. And so it'll either be that date or the date they actually signed the contract, not when it was installed, but the later of those two dates. And they have two years after that. And we'll kind of keep track of that. We have in Eureka right now, we're having a couple of people who are like, hey, you need to get, you need to call and get set up or, no, it's not going to be free anymore.
Gotcha.
That's the way the statute works.
Cool.
Yours was set up way before we had gas.
Yeah, I think we should encourage anyone that's planning on getting a meter, just to call and set up your account, probably get it done. And that, you know, we can call back in, just give your name and address and we'll be able to arrest.
I know we love it at school, it's like.
That was the first one, right?
Yeah, pretty even heat at school, which it wasn't for a long time, so. But coal's nice, but it doesn't, doesn't burn even a lot.
I was going to show a couple of slides about the price of natural gas. Even with the Ukraine conflict, everybody started exporting all their gas from the States, which made the price go sky high. It has come back down, it's back down five or six dollars a day, but then we're paying sixty-five for a few months. So that swung our rates up because we don't adjust every day, we only adjust after we get way behind. And so we, we had to raise rates, they'll come back down. We do what we call pass-through case a few times a year where it's only the cost of gas we ju, you know, we adjust for the cost of gas, but, so it's, it's higher than it's traditionally been, it's still very reasonable and very even heat by the statistics.
And on the side note, I wanted to thank Green River City Offices and their personnel and staff because they have been above and beyond awesome to help us. Because we're kind of reached out once in a while, we're not right here, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, that's good to hear. Any other questions, Collins? All right, we'll move on to the next agenda, thank you.
Thank you.
You can hopefully stay.
I said I have to remain here.
Thank you for coming.
Right home.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you.
All right. Is that Mike's?
Oh, yeah.
Good company. All right, remember to come back.
Hi, Doctor. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, thank you.
I'll see you Thursday.
Sounds good. Moving to agenda item number two, discuss approved and denied resolution R twenty-two dash twenty-two three, replacing the city's parental leave policy. Our current parental leave policy accounts for if a, it only accounts for mothers as one part of it. And the other thing is that it accounts for they can have access to sick and annual leave and other accrued leaves if they have, if they qualify for FMLA while they're taking off after bringing the child into the home. So we've redrafted that to be slightly more generous for the employees. Once every twenty-four months, a parent, if they qualify for FMLA, meaning the Family Medical Leave Act, can have access to four weeks of parental leave. And then they can also use their accrued leave during that time to make up the other months if they're taking more time than that off. And that's what, what we're going to try to do moving forward. It's sort of for two reasons. The one is that the state and other municipalities are sort of shifting to this to compete with the private sector. The private sector's parental leave policy, depending on the company you work for, is significantly more generous than most states or municipality parental leave policies currently. So a lot of municipalities are shifting to sort of compete a little bit with the private sector in that, in that fringe benefit. And the second idea is we obviously at some point are going to need to attract young workers who might be thinking about starting families and so making the parental leave policy slightly more generous. If in the case that both parents work for the city at the same time, only one can take advantage of that parental leave paid time off in a twenty-four month period, so.
What was it before?
Before it was just mothers could take off three months, which we have to grant anyway under the Family Medical Leave Act. And they could use their sick or annual leave to sort of, as paid time off until they ran out of it. And so that's what it was before. This just adds that four weeks, so from first, in a twenty-four month period, so that, you know, we're not paying it out every, every nine months, like a lot of work with people trying to.
There's easier ways to get time off.
Yeah, there are, there are easier ways to get time off, that's true. So.
That's expensive too.
So, that's the parental leave policy, that's what it shifts to.
I made a motion to approve the parental leave policy. I need to state the number.
Yeah, probably.
Resolution number R twenty-two dash twenty-two three.
I'll say it. We have a motion and a second, and because it's a resolution, we've got to do roll call. Larry?
Hurry, aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
All right, it passes unanimously. Discuss approved, denied resolution number R twenty-three twenty-two three, setting rules for comments and discussion during city council meetings. We've sort of had this like tame off a little bit, but when I first got in, this was one of my priorities based on the first public hearing that I went to by the mayor. And mostly what this is, is just adopting the state's sort of already stated policies for how public comment and how we run a meeting. It's like the, how, it's simplified Robert's Rules of Order in how we're going to run the meeting, which is essentially the chair, which in this case is the mayor, which is me, can invite public comment at any time. We're also going to set public comment as a individual agenda item, usually at the first of the meeting unless there's something else that's more time pressing. Where if there's something that's not on the agenda that the public would like to comment on, we give you the opportunity to say, is there any public comment? People raise their hand, if there's like forty people that want to talk, I set a time limit on how long each person can talk. We get everyone's names, so it's easy for Julie to record and we go through a list and we hear the public comments and we get those into the minutes. And then we move into other items. If the item itself is a discuss, approve, deny, it does not have public comment unless it is invited by the chair, which is the general sort of like level. Now, there's obvious exceptions to that, which is things that require public hearing have to have public comment, so like any ordinance passings, any zoning changes, all those things require public hearing. And so in those situations, the chair will do the same thing, they'll figure out who wants to comment, they will allow it, they'll ask again at the end. And before they close the public hearing, if there's any additional comment that needs to be made, they'll set time limits, that type of thing. And the major component of that, I feel like personally, is a lot of the public hearings or a lot of the public comment that I've recently had has been good, but I haven't been able to hear it all, is my major concern as an elected official and I think for the governing body of the voters, I'm sure that that's also a major concern for the council, because there's a lot of cross-talk going on and things like that. And so I, I don't necessarily hear all of the concerns because we have done it a little bit more losses fair in terms of like, yeah, sure, go ahead and talk whenever. The last couple of times we did some hand raises and stuff like that and that was good. And I think that this process just sort of cleans that up and makes it a little bit more official. And so that's what that is about. You can read through all of the many individual components of it, but I broke down the basis of how it's going to sort of affect us and public comment and public hearing.
Where can you read through all these?
All resolutions are posted to the website and if you want a copy, then I can give it to you.
Okay.
So, yeah, every resolution was posted with the agenda.
Or, well, the, the.
To the city website, yeah.
It's on the agenda.
We can pack that in.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
So who puts this on the agenda or is that sponsored by someone, like this, this resolution? Who, who put it on the agenda? Was that you?
Me, that's charity. Yeah, so, and, and that's another great point, like within that it says that I can sponsor any item that's going to go on the agenda and also two, two council members can sponsor any item to go on the agenda. In general, the way that it's sort of worked in the past is if you come to city council and you request Tyler to put something on the agenda, he runs it by me. And there's only been one time that I can remember that I said, let's have a conversation about that first with these individuals before we put this in front of the city council. And other than that, usually I'm willing to hear whatever you want to say. If you want to, like, if you have a specific sort of like, I want to talk about this thing and I want to have a discussion item about it, or it's something even that you think should come up for approval and denial, I'll hear you out. And I, again, I haven't, I have had one item that I didn't put on the agenda, so. For the most part, I want to hear what this, I mean, we're your elected officials, we want to hear what you have to think. So the chair can sponsor and two council members can sponsor. So if you get a bad answer from me, you can just go to Ben and Beau and have them do it instead and that's fine too.
Right, well, sometimes as a citizen, you're like, well, I don't know who put this on here or which one sponsored it, right?
So I will say with, I, the way that I have sort of handled most resolutions, some of them are by force, right? So like we're, we're going after certain government funding and things like that, so we need to pass a resolution for a grant or something like that. And those are things that usually come from Tyler first. And then Tyler and I have an agenda meeting where we sort of run through things. Sometimes that's virtual, he just sends me a big list of sort of like things we might need to take care of and then I finally, I, I make the final approval on the agenda. And then sometimes there's things that council members have come to me with and I either put it on the agenda alone as the sponsor or I don't think we've ever had an official like overrule of like the, like Kent and Larry want something that I don't.
Right.
That hasn't happened yet. I would welcome it if it did, it'd be totally fine with me. But yeah, so generally I would say as of right now, most things are, would be on, that make it their way to the agenda are sponsored by me through discussions that we're having either as a council or between myself and the city management. Does that all track?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question about this.
Sure.
Um, because this is a discuss, approve, deny resolution. And setting rules for comments and discussion, basically, so that would be the people that aren't here right now.
Yeah, and to me, so like part of, so part of the process here is to be very honest, you actually, there's no need to invite public comment on this particular thing. We can set the, I can set the rules for it as a chair without any invitation of public comment. I know that that sounds strange, but that's the way that the state law is technically governed. Now, the reason that we're doing this is because I felt like there's an inefficiency in how we're running the meetings that require public comment and require public hearing. And so we're setting it and it is just the state rules. This isn't any, we're not like applying like any sort of, and also, you know, this individual in town can never talk. There's nothing that's laid out like that and in general, everyone who wants to make a public comment. And we're also trying to set a designated time because especially, especially like, I know how hard it is to get to every meeting, like as a citizen, as a resident, like, you know, like when I was running for mayor, it's not like I got to every single meeting and I wanted to, but it was, it was sort of difficult. I'm a little bit better about it now that I don't want to, but, the, so I, I know how hard it is, but like, let's say that you have something that's sort of been like, you know, racking your brain as you've been driving around town and you've been thinking about something and you notice it's not on the agenda when you drive by the post office or whatever. But you can't stay for the whole meeting, we want to make sure that there's still time for you to come in and make a quick public comment and then bounce out if you need to. So we are still, like, it's going to be an official agenda item every time you get to talk. It's just, the only thing that might change is we're not necessarily going to entertain everyone talking as long as they want about whatever they want, no matter what.
Okay, got it. And I am familiar with Robert's Rules of.
I, I think that from what I understand, I see it as, as we're giving everybody a chance to talk because it seems like sometimes we get in those public hearings and like one or two people control the whole meeting on the public comment and we don't get to hear everybody that wants to talk. So this is kind of a way to make sure everybody has the opportunity that wants to talk. It's not to shut people up, so.
Yeah, so, and I mean, and there's also, after a public hearing is over or anything like that, is there's still room for myself as chair or even just if any council member is requesting me, and they can always ask me and say like, hey, can we get some public comment on this? I feel like I didn't hear quite enough from this person or this person, I have a question for this person based on what they said. Like those are all things that we can still entertain and we want to, we just want a little bit more order to that, so. And with that, I will close this one for public comment. Any other questions from the council before we, then I would entertain a motion.
Motion that we approve resolution number R twenty-three dash twenty-two three, setting rules for comments and discussion during city council meetings.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, it's a resolution, so roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
It is unanimous of those present. Okay, discuss, approve, deny, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two three, allowing city employees to share their sick leave with other city employees. Do you have this one somewhere right there?
It should be part of that packet.
There we go, there.
Can I even trick you about this one?
This is another one of those that in the private sector is being on, so.
And a lot of other public sectors too, like this is allowed, like this is allowed in the school district and a lot of other things, so. I'm going to read this one really quickly because I didn't get a chance to read it before. I've read all the other ones, but somehow missed this one in the attachment, so.
So I guess my only question is just how, i- is this sharing going to be something, or it doesn't sound like we're setting up a bank, we're just allowing it for like one time?
Yeah, send the computer, just do it one time.
Transfer, like, and so it's be something where they get it into me and to you and we run over it and decide if it's.
Yeah, this one has me or you, but we can do.
I'm fine with it being me or you. I don't think, personally, I don't get to vote, but I think that you're in the office on the day-to-day and in the event that it's not appropriate for you to do it, it should definitely come to me. Right. And so you would be able to understand if like, I don't think that's going to work for budget and things like that with, you could probably make that decision.
That was the biggest difference what I saw between this and what we have at the school is, is that we have a bank at the school and we fly toward it, where we give out ones a day a year into the bank. But I think maybe more, because the city's a lot smaller.
Yeah, significantly less employees. Okay, it might be something that we look at changing again in the future to create some sort of bank if we think like it would work with the number of employees we have, because that's, what do you know?
We just, years ago, had one employee that was kind of getting to the point of needing it because they were running out of their own and, you know, in the office it's like, hey, I'm not using mine, I've been here twenty years and have like a huge bank. I will go ahead and offer that to them. And I don't know that it even came to council for that matter, it was just kind of like, maybe it wasn't felt like it was necessary, but hey, Lonnie, you do payroll, here's my written request to transfer twenty hours.
Okay.
From me to her. And then actually in that point, it wasn't even needed, so then it went transferred back. Basically, it was just a quick, quick little snap, where too many from. But there wasn't an actual policy allowing that and it's been recent that it's been questioned, can I give to Michael?
Okay, all right. So in, in this situation, it's like case-by-case basis and it appears to me that. So in, in this situation, it's like case-by-case basis and it appears to me that it could be a thing where some, like, one employee could give a day, another employee could give a day, right? As long as they all have like specific request forms filed for whatever it is that they're giving.
And they have their signatures.
So they could pool it, so they're not like, someone's not losing like, you know, three hundred hours.
The, the hardest thing that I see about this rather than having a bank is that it depends on other employees giving. Rather, time, um, where if there's a bank and all the employees are giving to it, then, um, it's there and it's only the management's decision to give it out, rather than that employee have to go to this employee and say, hey, can I have some of your hours?
My understanding is that the, probably the reason this is kind of a policy is for an individual right now who's willing to do it, but there is no policy in place. And so I think that we could probably move forward on passing this with the, maybe a caveat that we're gonna look into like creating a policy where we create some type of bank, cause I do, like, the big part that I agree with, with what Councilman Nelson says, if you are, if it's incumbent on these request forms, the thing that could become awkward, we're all very giving people and we're, I'm sure we would like all be willing to, but it puts an employee, um, in a lot of pressure if they're the person to be asked. And so if we could create something that's a little bit less, you know, like, yeah, oh, at the end of the year I had two days I didn't need to use or whatever, like I, I can donate two to the bank this year and then, yeah.
Rather than being known as that employee that says, no, I think I'm gonna save.
Yeah, it just, it seems like it.
Sorry, I don't think yours is important enough, I'm not getting it.
I only, I only give for, you know, fatal illnesses and, yeah, like, there would be like, I, I just feel like it could potentially create some strife within the office, like at some point among the, amongst the employees. So I, I don't have any problem with, I think, moving forward on this for now and then maybe looking at a way that we can sort of shore up the policy to make it a little less incumbent on employee altruism.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve R twenty-four dash twenty twenty-three, allowing city employees to share their sick leave with other employees and revisit it again in the future.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. It's a resolution, Larry.
Aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Is unanimous among those present? Okay, discuss approved denied resolution, R twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three, setting and making, uh, public the city's holiday schedule. Um, are there any, I, I've heard that there are major changes to this. Are there, I, I didn't, it didn't look that different to me from last year.
Juneteenth, technically added, but the policy already forced it because of the governor's, yeah, so, I just added it.
Yeah, so the general policy has been any state, any state holiday that's recognized. Juneteenth is the day that the slaves in Texas found out that they were free, which was like quite a while after the Civil War, and so, and then it's become a federal and a state holiday in a lot of states, so. And the governor recognized it last year, was that, or was it two years ago? And we just had to put.
Minutet.
Yeah, so, uh, any state holidays recognized by the governor, governor, including if it's not on this list, is technically open to be observed, disclosed, so.
So I have a question, do they have a limit on the number of holidays so they could just keep adding more?
I think, I think technically the governor can make it three sixty-five if he wants to. I haven't seen anything where he says he can, so, it is a strange like kind of power, right? You could sort of.
Well, so, I mean, because that's what I asked, so how many days of holidays do you keep adding more? Or do you have to take away one holiday, is there a certain number that, okay, this is the, the max out number? Or this is the?
Our current policy doesn't account for any max holiday and the, and I don't believe the state policy accounts for any max holiday.
Oh, well, you guys just wanna keep getting more and more holidays, huh? Keep adding to the list. Yeah.
I can't wait for.
Up through the city.
We're contracted employees, so, we don't get those benefits. But yeah, so that was what the add was, was Juneteenth, right? Yeah, all right. Any questions about the holiday policy that I would entertain a motion?
I make a motion, we accept resolution R twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three, on resolution setting the city's holiday schedule.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
All right, it's a resolution, Larry.
Aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
It passes unanimously among those present. Discuss approved deny ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, setting the number and type of planning commission members.
Oh, there's one right before that.
Oh, yeah, I crossed it off prematurely. Fullness idiot, okay. Uh, discuss approved deny ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, establishing the city council's regular meeting schedule for the calendar year of twenty twenty-four. And so it looks like it'll be the same as the second Tuesday.
And there's the holidays, right? Those we just talked about.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
I mean, yeah, last year, I believe I went through the whole calendar.
One of them was Valentine's Day, but.
Last year we moved Tuesday, Tuesday in February, cause it was Valentine's Day, to give you all a preview further. But, um, there's, I, when I looked through it, I didn't see all these.
I think I went through and made sure, but, yeah.
Tyler, I was actually gonna ask this before all this, and maybe we changed it now, but Canal Company used to have their annual meetings set on a specific day in January, which was always a Tuesday.
Oh.
And so we used to say city council in January is on a Wednesday, but I don't know if they keep happening or if they are still kinda set with that, but.
So anybody here goes to Canal or?
Well, I do, but I don't know, I don't remember.
You want me to call Brandon real quick?
Sure.
You can even put like a little stipulation in the ordinance too.
Cause it was a matter that the shareholders' meeting was, you know, open to public and they wanted as many people to get it.
Yeah, so there wasn't a conflict.
Yeah, and probably also not the council to go to that, to have their input too, but I don't know if that's become an issue. Well, it wasn't last year, cause they opened in January.
So let's go ahead and, I, I think we can probably just pass the resolution and make sure we add a stipulation that if it's on the same day, we'll move January's meeting. And then, as long as we're posting it at least twenty-four hours, but we'll put, we'll try to post a week in advance on that so that everyone knows that we've moved it a day or, or a week or whatever, so.
No, I think that's good.
Yeah, that we don't have to worry about. Getting hold of Brandon while he's in the middle of cows or.
Want stipulation in?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make the motion approve ordinance.
Twenty twenty-three oh dash oh seven.
Number twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, uh, to establish city council's regular meeting schedule. As long as January's meeting didn't interfere with the Canal meeting.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, it's a resolution, Larry.
Aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
It passes unanimously among those present. Now, discuss approved denied ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash.
Who was first, I'm sorry to interrupt?
Uh, Beau motioned.
Beau, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, setting the number and type of planning commission members, so. The changes to this are, there is hereby created a planning commission within and for the city to be known as the planning commission. It may consist of eight members appointed by the member, mayor with the consent of the city council from among the qualified electors of the city. There shall be five regular members, there can be two alternate members. One member of the city council shall be a non-voting member of the commission and his or her term shall correspond with the tenure of the office. So what this does is it adds a city council member as a non-voting member, right? Or technically, it just changes that to be more clear.
Yeah, clarifies that and adds an alternate member.
And then the eight total members and adds in that to be a little slightly more clear and then the two alternate members, which we've, uh, run into just some issues over the past few years where, uh, someone needs to step down immediately or, or something like that, and so having an alternate member already getting the wins will help to make sure that we can keep planning and zoning stuff going easily, that's all.
So the alternate member is only if the member has to step down completely, not to just fill in on a meeting, right?
I think if there's like an extended leave of absence, stuff, the alternate member could step in for a few months. But, um, like if someone like that, um, like go somewhere to take care of a family member for six months or something like that, you could probably. Those are all things.
David raised his hand.
Let's hear what David has to say.
Yeah, so the alternate number is there is not full form, alternate number can jump in.
So anytime there's not a full form, the alternate member can jump in. Okay, that's good enough.
Okay.
I read that statue differently. But it's probably right, like David would know better, I, I read things once.
Yeah, that portion can come from.
Okay.
I was wondering why David was up there.
Thanks for the clarification, David.
He's watching you.
I guess that, that'll make it so that if they don't have a quorum, they can have somebody step in.
Which is awesome at some points, not so much right now. Okay. Very good. All right, with that clarification, I would entertain a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, setting the number and type of planning commission members.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, it's a resolution, Larry.
Aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
It passes unanimously of those present. Discuss approved deny the SS forty-eight grant agreement, you wanna talk about this time?
Yeah, we talked about this in that special meeting that we had where we discussed debt scenarios and, uh, projects. And it was tabled to give us time to find out if we could spend any of the money on actually fixing the street problems and it's only for a plan, and so, you know, to say, yeah, these are your problems and this is how you need to fix it. I, personally, I don't feel like it's worth twenty grand of the city's money to put this plan together. I would rather set it aside and fix the curb and gutter, but.
Yeah, is there any, um, there's no contingent, like, um, like, release of other funds that you, or you have to like? So like with Brownsville, for instance, like there's a contingent release.
There is with this, you could, um, get your planning and then use it to.
Apply for.
Apply for construction funding, but it's not gonna cover what was originally hoped to have it covered. When, it was the first time the federal government did this grant, so when Better City applied the communication, then the federal government was a little rough and they're hoping it was gonna apply a little differently. So then as we had to adjust it, it just, it's been forced to adjust to fit their parameters, but it really won't cover that much. It wouldn't even handle all of Broadway's planning with our engineers.
Okay.
We could start or we could try again in a different manner.
Okay. Did Better City have a recommendation when you were talking to them about it?
They're, he kinda thinks, Ryan was like, uh, it might not be the best time for the city if the budget's tight.
When I talked to Ryan about it a while ago, it felt like it was like six and one, it was just the other to him. He's like, I don't know, he's like, it could pan out and it could be a wash and.
The plan can change so much though, you might spend the money on it and then it change, two years from now it's out the window.
That's true too, yeah, yeah.
Maybe have another plan sitting on the shelf.
Yeah, get the council a different band.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion. So this is to, if, if we make a motion to deny, then we don't wanna be involved.
We just move forward, yeah.
I make a motion to deny the SS forty-eight grant agreement. I'll second. Motion and a second, and this doesn't cost us any money, so we can just vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. Uh, city council or staff concerns. So the employee reports are posted to, uh, with the website as well, like with the, not with the resolutions, but with the agenda. There's a big win from the museum, which was good, so.
The link. On the website.
Right, the website. I just have a question on that.
Yeah.
Hasn't it been known that, hey, I don't have access to the internet, can I come to the office and request from you to view that? Isn't that?
It's, it would be a public record, so they're always welcome.
Yeah, it's public records, you'll always have access if you come to the office.
So can you, I mean, you know, can you have a print copy that's in the office, so at any time you can come in and look at that?
Absolutely.
That would be nice and go into whatever is just like, drives you crazy.
Sure, yeah, no, that's no problem. I think that there can just be like a.
A folder.
Yeah, once the agenda's released, we'll just put in a resolution packet and an employee report packet. The employee reports often don't get in until like the Friday before. Right. Um, so that, you know, those aren't necessarily posted with the agenda themselves.
And so the agenda's posted, uh, by Monday at five or what?
Agenda is, what we're shooting for is the Tuesday before, so that there's a full week, uh, for the regular meeting. For special meetings and things like that, it's a little bit harder. We have to give you at least twenty-four no, hours notice, I like to try to do three days.
Twenty-four hours before the meeting.
Yeah, technically.
So Monday at seven P M., you have to check the website to see if there's something.
Technically, yes, that is, that is the open public meetings law. Yeah, but the, um, in general, we're always posted at least by end of business on Monday and we're moving to being posted by the Tuesday before, so there's a full week. And when we do that, we also post at the post office and there's a posting here and we'll make sure that there's an agenda packet for people who wanna come in and read employee reports or resolutions if they can't access it online, that's fine, I think, yeah.
And on the public notice website, which you can subscribe to get an email anytime we post anything.
Yeah, that's true.
That being said, the agenda be posted a week before, but that is mainly could make changes to it.
Correct.
Right, to a twenty-four hours before.
Yeah, we would try, here, my, personally, the, as chair of this, the, my personal concern is, especially for the regular meeting, um, I would like for there to be at least seven days notice if we can swing in. Uh, I think this one went out with like four business days and that was partial, that was mostly me. That was, I didn't get like certain resolution, uh, I didn't get certain resolution edits to Tyler in time. And so Julie posted it once she was able, once I gave her the go ahead. Um, we're gonna try to do seven days in front, in, in advance, a full week in advance so that there's plenty of time for everyone to come in and get informed if they want it, because obviously we'll be ready to do public comment. The more informed you are, the better, you know, that way we're not necessarily feeling public comments too that are like, well, what does this resolution say, you know, cause that is, it's sort of boxed out in the meeting, so. But I, but yeah, I understand your concern, we want you to be informed and so if there's a way that we can make that and that, that seems like the easiest way to me is just to have some sort of agenda packet that's printed out and it's up at the front that anyone can borrow or you could make a copy and take it with you or whatever you wanna do. But Kent, uh, yeah, this speak true, that technically, under the Open Public Meetings Act, if, as long as we post the changed agenda twenty-four hours in advance, that's enough, um, I, while I'm mayor, we will try very hard not to do anything where there would actually have to be action taken on any agenda items that are posted the day before. The, at least going forward, I don't think that that's necessarily been the practice up until now, because I was not as organized as I am now. Is the phrase obvious? But yeah, so we wanna, if we're adding anything to the agenda, I'd probably wanna try to keep it just to discussion items so that it's not anything that we're taking action on and trying to sneak something in last minute. And there's certain things that obviously we can't, any zoning change again, like all that stuff like that requires fourteen days notice to any adjacent property owner postings in the newspaper, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So those are all things that, like, you know, we'd never be able to sneak in anyway, but, uh, we're not trying to sneak anything in and we're trying to make sure we're as open as we can, so. Moving forward.
Wait, was this, so this was nine, right? City council staff concerns and comments or no?
Yeah, that's what we're still on.
Oh, I, may I?
Sure, what you got?
The, well, the water at the, at the dis, I don't know what you call it, the city facility for the dispensary of the water.
The truck fill.
The truck fill.
Uh-huh.
The number one is still just constantly, it's a constant stream. Now, I don't, it, it's. It, it's got to be doing damage underneath, the whole thing's.
Well, it just drips all the time.
No, it, it.
I know.
It's not until one drip.
They said, oh, it's no, it's, it's too little string.
Okay.
They're all early.
All right.
And I don't know if they ever put the light bulb in so that you can see in the dark, because when you have to get water, it, and when it's dark and that means now it's very early, there is no light there. And it's really hard to try to connect your hoses hanging onto your phone and connect those.
Yeah, for sure.
It's, the issue with the water dripping is a bigger issue as it gets colder and it freezes.
Right.
And I don't know if, if there's the possibility of having in that room a bucket with ice melt that we can spread out when we go to get water or something, I, I don't know, it's just.
That would be, be an issue. Sure.
That's just a concern as it gets cold.
Probably some parts I'm guessing, because it was totally shut down. When Brian got parts removed in.
Just get Ben and let us know that it is fixed or we got our part, we put it in, but there's something else that's leaking kind of, and I don't remember, he said the part was hard to get. He just says, when you have somebody come in and say, hey, it's leaking, we are aware and working on it.
Okay. Parents are slow.
It cannot not be doing damage underneath like the whole roof.
I, it's got asphalt, so I don't, I can't confirm or deny.
I'd rather have it leak so I can have conduits deal. This one. This one, this one takes a long time.
Yeah, all right.
But needs to be fixed.
Yeah, okay. I've got meetings coming up, I'll talk. Any city council concerns? I, I guess, uh, this is a win for Robin that wouldn't have been in the employee reports. The travel council approved a day to, up to twelve thousand dollars for, uh, essentially like event supplies is what they're calling it, which like amounts to, so that we as a city don't always have to like go over to the rec center to borrow canopies and tables and chairs and things like that. The only stipulation they put on it was something that was probably going to be in the works anyway, which is essentially an inventory system to make sure we get back everything that we loan out. Um, and so that, that was good. Uh, they also approved a, uh, sort of, for event planning moving forward, they approved a sort of flat number that they're going to give Green River, uh, into their event budget. And so it gives Robin a little bit more freedom in terms of how she's using it instead of having to just take the smaller limit of whatever they'll give per event, they'll just give sort of a flat amount to Green River and she can use twelve thousand Hometal days and one thousand here or whatever, like figure it out how she needs it instead of. It used to be just like thirty-five hundred per event was all they would give. And so they've changed that specifically just for Green River, which I think was nice. The other end of the county is still limited to the, if you're an extra large event, it's thirty-five hundred. Um, or I can't limit the maxes, but. Um, okay, and those are both wins for them and then, yeah, Brian's been. All those public works guys have been working a lot, a lot, a lot to help with, uh, while they're, especially while they're finishing building surfaces and everything, so. Really appreciative of, you know, they, they gave the front office kudos and so do I. And thank you so much for all the work that you've done while Dominion and Fugles has been tearing up the earth and, uh, and then the, the public works guys also deserve a shout out for the great work that they did during that, so. And are still doing as it is a little bit ongoing. And that's all I have. Any other staff concerns? You got any, you wanna? Just with the new report?
Well, we're gonna talk about the treasures part of that.
Do you have the, um, treasure report? You just noticed there's a couple that have corrections that were found later. And then as I looked at our ordinances, I don't know that you have to approve the treasures report every time. I think it's just so you see it. So we can even take that off, but I'm gonna go make sure on that, but.
Let's see what best practices are, like if, if it's something that, I mean, definitely I want to see it every time, obviously, so that we can keep.
And that's required if we give it.
That we get it and I don't know if we need to, you're saying we're not sure if we need to approve it and then get sent agenda every time?
Right.
All right.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Did they give the gate installed at the airport, the twenty thousand dollar gate or fifty thousand dollar gate or whatever?
I know they sure talked about it a lot and they called me a bunch, but I don't know if it ever got there.
Federal government is a pain, so I'm not totally sure. They were in the midst of working on getting the money and finishing up the dreamers. I, not that I know of, they have, I haven't had any project reports, so.
Oh, cause yeah, the last time I was out there, there was, it was a gate and it says, please close the gate and gates were all open, so.
If I were to guess, I'd say construction hasn't begun, because usually they give me reports and I haven't got anything.
I know, I've signed all the reports I believe that I need to for Armstrong, Armstrong Engineering to draw down on the funds. And then those funds need to be released from whatever the funding source is and that's probably where a hangup would happen normally with federal stuff like that, but. So I've signed things that say that they can draw down the money from the, from that grant, so. Okay. We'll move on to discuss, approve, deny, the consent agenda, which includes the September twenty twenty-three financial report, the March, August, September twenty twenty-three treasure report with some corrections, the October twenty twenty-three treasure report, the October tenth twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes, the October twenty twenty-three payment approval report and the November twenty twenty-three payment approval report.
Can I just tell you the, what the treasure report corrections were?
Yeah, sure.
I just added a line item and I forgot to total, add that line in the totals.
Okay.
And I caught it going back in those few months that.
And the reason why there's October two thousand twenty-three payment approval report was because when I went to print that last month, I had it on the agenda, but then the printer, I couldn't, the printer wasn't working, so I couldn't print off that report. So I did it again this time so you could look at it.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. The motion is there, second?
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous among those present. Agenda item number eleven. Does anyone have more public comment? We don't have that specifically on the agenda, but I can invite it before. What do you got?
I would do, well, the past, I think it was a special meeting with the Lithium people.
Uh huh.
I felt like that we should have tabled it. That was just a quick recommendation to do and that dude was a lobbyist.
Okay.
Blowing smoke up everywhere, but.
All right.
Pardon me, that's the number.
Okay.
Watch, this one worked.
We'll, we'll redone it.
It just seemed like we ought to just like calm down a minute and like really think through what, what, what's that's coming from and the parent company's from Australia.
Sure.
Just to, just be like, okay, sure.
Yeah.
Letter of recommendation. I just felt like it could be tabled for two weeks or whatever.
Okay.
So I just wanted to draw it up.
Thank you.
So has that letter of recommendation been reviewed?
Yes.
Is that a public letter?
Uh, yeah, should be.
So you, I come get a copy from you?
Mm-hmm, sure thing.
Okay.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is there, second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
A recommendation to change the time of the law.
We'll do that one there. Thank you, everybody.
It gets harder to remember which talks I changed, which ones I have it.
Exactly. I'm lucky at school, it's done by radio. Our cell is where our phones and our watches.